Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So library isn't here yet, so soon you want to go over a couple of other things?
Sure.
I gave you guys all a copy of this. This is that proclamation request. And I had another one sent. I mean, another one was emailed to me, so I put a copy of it in email box. And it's a follow-up asking if you are interested in doing this proclamation and plus they sent you the language bit. You know, if that helps.
Yeah.
So you need to decide if you're going to do that. I forwarded it and I put a copy in everybody's mailbox.
Is that on the school choice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Paula. How you doing? Welcome back.
You can have this one. Okay, so the meeting that you're planning on Thursday, that you're going to have either Sergeant Shapiro and Trooper Darcy come and talk to Paul Pelletier. Neither Sergeant Shapiro or Trooper Darcy can come on Thursday night. Dan Meehan is still planning to come.
Okay.
And Paul will still be available with the conference call. So if you guys want to still have that meeting.
I think we should. I think we should at least talk to Paul and Dan for...
And there's another email that I...
Can't get everybody together. I don't see any sense in it.
Well, but just to talk, you said just to talk to Paul at least?
Well, I was, I mean, I guess I have a few questions. What if he trains his staff to not...
Because we just got another email.
I think everybody ought to be present for this meeting. That was the idea when the...
Another email came in today that I forwarded to you guys from Jonathan Shapiro regarding another incident that may or may not have come from trains, but I, it looks like it might have.
I mean, if you...
No, no.
You gotta get your chair. She's got a chair up the other end.
Okay, so do you want to wait? Would you be more comfortable with waiting till after even more? I have no problem with that. So if you want, I'm just trying to just get them all together at the same time.
Okay. Any suggestions? When you want them to come in?
Well, it's probably gonna have to be after six on Thursday probably at some point, but because now I'm kind of with the holidays and all that stuff, so.
So let me ask you this. Do you guys plan to have a meeting next week?
On Monday? Probably. No, we're closed on Monday both times.
I understand. That's why I'm asking. I know that the 26th is the holiday. So is there another day next week you're going to have a meeting? Or are you not going to have one at all next week?
Well, we probably should meet at some point just for, you know, just a short time to get all of our paperwork done. Either Wednesday or Thursday, probably a Thursday evening, I would say, because we're all here, but I would say we probably need to meet both Thursdays because we're not going to be here all Monday. So if we meet at Thursdays at six, are you okay with that? I mean, it won't take us very long, but at least we'll...
So next Thursday?
Yeah. I would do the same thing. Yeah, I would do the same thing.
Thursdays at six. Did you say, Christine?
Yes.
Okay. And then also the following Thursday, we don't have a calendar in front of me, but... Okay, and that, oh, well, the following Thursday is planning board at six o'clock on the fifth. You've got the first Thursday of every month.
Well...
Do you want to combine a meeting with them?
We could, because we'll probably just be signing our stuff probably or whatever.
There's stuff in the mineral water and all that going on too.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll still come in. You know, if we have something to do, we can always do it after or...
Okay. Now, this coming Thursday, you've got the RIT department, so you're coming in for that. Now, after today, maybe we'll have more budgets that we can schedule for one of these other Thursdays or next Thursday if you're not going to have... All right, so next week you're not meeting with these guys. You want me to cancel that?
Yeah.
So then I'll reschedule for maybe the following week. Okay. All right, so now we'll move on to Masi since she's here. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
Good.
Do you have a blank page like we usually do? Do you guys have a copy of this?
I have this. I probably do have a copy of that too. I'm sure it's a little...
Okay. Do you have a blank page for me?
Do you want one of these? That'll be me. Oh, you got that one?
I don't have my library. I didn't have it.
All right, so let's just look at this little body here.
Just do it this way.
Right away to save time? They don't. I would like to work two more hours a week at the same rate. So what that works out to is right now... Yeah. Do you have that one? So right now I'm at eleven seven, uh, eleven thousand seven hundred dollars for eighteen hours a week. What I'd like to do is the same rate, but two more hours a week. That's not right. It says twenty, oh, I have twenty hours per week. I was like, I don't want twenty more hours a week. I just want two, four twenty hours a week. I would, I need more time to get stuff done. I have stuff that is lingering and hours I am volunteering that you should maybe we could pay me for that. I also have some suggestions that I've been getting from the public for people who would like to have more access to the library. I've had a suggestion for a Alzheimer's cafe where people who have Alzheimer's can come in on a Saturday where it's not as maybe disruptive to them or the regular public, where they could come in with their caregivers. And it's a nationwide initiative where it's once a month, they come in, I could read to them. It wouldn't be something necessarily that I had to facilitate all the time, but it'd be a place where people were comfortable to come. It's a really nice program. I'd like to do it. On a lap over from Saturday afternoon, so our normal hours are ten to one. I'd like to run it twelve thirty to one thirty, give them an hour a month where they could come. The rest of the meetings, we've had a suggestion for adults with autism who could come and maybe network together about how to kind of circumvent the world and maybe network a little bit with caregivers. People would like to do a crafting group where they could just come in and bring whatever they're working on and sit. So it would be like one Saturday per month of those things. And then a blank Saturday where a Frisco group or a group that wants to meet about whatever, it would be a free-for-all. So anybody could schedule that out and it would be an extra half an hour added to my time plus more time for processing and all the things that I'm kind of lacking in time for.
That sounds good. It really sounds like you're getting, trying to get the community, right, involved and people helping. That's great.
We've done, it's been happening more lately. We're getting people coming in going, wow, I've never been in here before. It's bigger than I thought it was. And we did a craft night where we had, I didn't, only one person that had come into the library as a regular patron. Everybody else was new. So we get those people coming in. Two of those people have small kids that have never been in the library before. They each brought another friend to come with them. So that's like, you know, a little bit of community out there.
Well, it's changing times. You're probably going to be busier anyways, so.
I lose my snowbirds, but that's why I get people that come because they're looking for someplace where their kids can, you know, read a story and do a craft and that sort of thing. Yeah. But because of that, the employee costs also go up because if I work more hours than that means that there's more taxes I go up, which is the next one, which is only a hundred dollars, but it's...
And you think you have enough in your substitute wages? Because you don't usually have a substitute coming in very often.
I don't usually use a two hundred fifty. It's twenty-five hours a year. I don't usually use them all, but I'd like to keep them just in case I have something. So that's usually, I usually use about ten maybe, maybe. I'm not sure how many I used last year, but it was definitely somewhere in the ten to eleven range.
And your supplies went up a little bit?
Yeah. Things cost more. My labels cost went up. I've had to buy more Clorox wipes. It's just, it's a germ factor of the care. You have four hundred and fifty kids that come through the school. Every single one of them comes through the library. And although the school does clean the library, they don't wipe everything down. And so I found that since I've been wiping everything down, I've gotten less sick. People who've come in have gotten less sick, so. It's not that I'm spending a hundred dollars on Clorox wipes, but that's one of the things that we just did. We were using spray. It's just, it's easier to wipe down after everything, lick stuff. Counter of the books. I'm like, please don't like that. They're, well, the height of the counter is right where the kids' faces are, so they run their nose along it. They're awful cute, but they're full of dirt.
Yeah, it's just gross.
But you look at their little faces and you're like, oh, I'll just wipe that after you go and then wash my hands. It's great. So the books are staying the same. It's just that I'm finding that the last couple of years I've had to do a shift to supplies or use raised funds for supplies, so it makes more sense to just kind of knock that and see. I try to be really responsible with it, but I think maybe that has just been a little bit lacking.
Equipment?
So in the past, we've had, we had computers that the school gave us and then they were so old that they took them back. And then I was like, well, can I have something? So they were nice enough to loan us two Chromebooks, but as their numbers have gotten short, they take them and loan them out to kids who break theirs or teachers who are new and don't have one. So it's happened probably at least ten or twelve times where somebody came in to borrow a public computer. And I went to go get one in the cabinet and there was nothing in there, nothing. Things were waiting for repair and we didn't have one to give to them. So I had to send them away with no computer, which it was nice for them to loan us one. I think we can probably fund one that's ours. And I kind of cheat and keep my husband on call for the IT part of it. So if I have like some sort of breakdown, he can kind of finagle what we have going on over there. He's nice.
Well, that's good.
The Chromebooks are less expensive. You are unable to download anything onto them. They all, they work all on the cloud, so you don't have to worry about somebody downloading something on it that somebody else might find later. It's not set up to, it's really hard to get like a virus on one because it doesn't, nothing exists in that computer. I think it's a good choice for loaning it out to people who you're not really sure what they're doing on them. They're usually looking for jobs, you know, or paying bills or whatever, but none of that gets saved so that when somebody else comes in, that has to, it's all wiped clean. So if you log out, there's no, there's a main, if the school really knew too, there's a main record on their server, but nothing sits on that computer. So I think it would be a good choice for if we needed, if we decided to do something that we could use. And that's a roundabout figure. We might be able to get one for less. It might be a little bit more. It depends on when we buy it, when it's approved and when we buy it. They're always changing prices.
Constantly updating, updating each one, is how computers are. Okay, well, events?
Same as last year.
Doing the summer event then?
Yeah.
Summer reading programs?
Yeah. And that's exactly the same as last year. Which I'm happy to answer questions on. If you have any. We get a good response. Everybody loves it. We do, I do a...
You do a summer camp, two kids?
Yeah. They come in on a separate day. We don't cut, that's not any of this budget. They come in on a separate day and we do them in small groups. So usually they have about forty kids. So summer reading's a separate group of kids that comes in. We're very kid-heavy during the summer because we're not kid-heavy during the year, you know, because it closes during the school. So we put them in manageable groups so that if, you know, somebody else comes in, an adult comes in, they're not, you know, being surrounded by small children who sometimes are a little excitable in the summertime. But it's nice and cool in there usually because we're built on that slab, which is nice for them too.
Yeah.
But the summer reading program itself is, once a week for five weeks, I do like a, we tie a book in with science. We learn about, like, we learned about Leonardo da Vinci this summer and then we built some of his inventions. We did a thing with magnets. We learned how magnets run motors and they run, you know, all kinds of things. And then we played with magnets and we had a really great time with it. We learned about flight and how flight works and we did all kinds of things inside and outside the library. So it kind of blends all that stuff in. And I have room for, I usually try to take twenty-five kids because it's usually me, but I had three volunteers this summer and we had anywhere from, depending on the week and when kids go on vacation, we had as many as thirty down to like, you know, twelve. So it fluctuates. But then we have leftover projects that we use and say we had, I had planned for fifteen and I only had ten. Then we have five extra projects and we fill those in throughout the year. We do like a special Saturday where we do that sort of stuff.
Oh, nice.
Everything gets moved up. And then...
You post it, John?
Well, I'm not using it. I'm trying to. When we do interlibrary loan, the library that we loan from sends it to us. And then we have to send it back at our cost. So they, when they send it to us, they pay for that shipping. When we send it back, we pay for it. So I'm bundling a lot of that stuff together, renewing so I can make a big bucks. When you use the postal service, USPS, they give you a special library rate. And so if you send out a book, it's two dollars and forty-eight cents. If you send out six books, it's like five dollars. So if you put more books together, less shipping. So I've been able to, I've had a surplus the last couple of years that I looked at and I was like, well, maybe we can slide that back some so that we don't have that surplus. And so the, the whole, even with the increase in hours, the whole, the only increase is eight hundred and thirty-five dollars to the whole budget. And the equipment is a decrease of five ninety-five.
You guys have any questions?
Looks good to me.
It was a loon.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Oh, great, John.
Thank you. We just won a ten thousand dollar grant, the library, which is pretty exciting. It doesn't have to do anything with our budget, but it does add things to the library that the town and people don't have to pay with through taxes. It's not, the other ten thousand dollar grant we won was cash, which we got to choose how to spend.
Yeah.
This is four hundred books that they choose. It comes to us. They're particularly chosen. It's a United Way Connect. I always get it wrong. Hold on, I wrote it down. United Way, Club Connect Reading Oasis Grant. See, you'll understand why that's a multiple. So there's four hundred books, pre-K to second grade. We get six beanbags, a rug, two bookcases. And they'll deliver that in February, which is awesome because that's very important for our pre-readers that maybe aren't going to elementary school right now because money's tight. And, you know, we, they'll advertise that. It's also an online resource for helping kids work through their reading issues with games and a part for parents to help them. So it's really nice.
Oh, nice. That's great.
So that's, and then the thousand dollar grant that we get from Walmart every year that we get two fifty, two hundred and fifty every quarter.
Good for you.
You work hard.
All of that. Thank you.
You're a great woman. Thank you.
I really wish I was already done.
I'm a short story reader. I do that.
I know.
Christine, can we ask a question?
Is it allowed?
Yeah, I'm open.
How do you find out if you are going to have that Alzheimer's meeting? Do you find out through the library?
I would advertise it through Facebook, but I would also put like a flyer up. It's a national initiative. It has certain rules of what kind of stuff you can do. They want to make sure that you're not bringing people in to try to sell them something or...
Right.
So once, if I was approved for the extra hours, I would definitely look into that more. I have a little soft spot for that in general. But people have asked if, there's one in Sanford.
I think it would be great.
And I think there's one in Bitterford, but there's not many this way.
I think it would be fantastic.
Thank you. They call it Alzheimer's Cafe or Memory Cafe and you can look it up online. Do you know about it?
I've heard of it.
Yeah, so I'd love to have it here. I think it would be a nice warm place to offer it. I would probably still say small.
But they can't just be dropped off, right?
No. That's one of the rules. It's not respite care. It's definitely caregivers. And you can have like speakers come in and talk to caregivers, but it's mostly just for people who are looking for that routine. And it's getting out somewhere in public where it's nonjudgmental and it's comfortable and it's, we have a bathroom where if your person needed some help in the bathroom, it's big enough to do that, which is sometimes hard when you're in public. There's a whole list of things that it shows what sort of place would be a good place. And the library falls in all those line items.
It's wheelchair accessible? The whole library is wheelchair accessible?
It is.
That's nice.
In the winter, we're a little slippery, but I do my best. But yeah, which is...
That sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last year we talked about it, but it didn't snow very much. Anytime that there is a storm on Friday night to Saturday, whoever is digging out the town hall and we're going to have them dig out the library, I have a shovel over there which I can keep up if the storm is ongoing through. But the first crack at it would be really nice if I didn't have to. Is that possible still? Do you have somebody that does that and it would be, we can freight up at four ten o'clock on Saturday?
Yeah, we can pass it on to Tommy.
Usually if the school's in session, they've already cleaned it because my things are from school. So I know it's like kind of an allowance type thing. And you can absolutely ask Tommy on my, on my cell phone number and the number at the library if that helps or whoever. That would be great. And they usually supply us with sand and melt, we usually have bucket over there. If that doesn't happen, I can add it on to like the supplies. So usually years past is what they've done with us. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Perfect. Great. Good job.
Thank you. Do you guys, you don't need a copy of this paperwork?
I have that. No, not of that. No, I have your one here. Oh, my God. Thank you. Like this?
Yeah.
Oh, you should be stapling it together. Borrow the packet we got last week. Second page is mine. This is playing boy.
You can get your, what do you say, Alphol?
I've got some questions because this is the first time I've done a training board. You can wait for your boss to move stuff over. You'll have to work me a little bit. But regular wages, you want one person I have on wages at Williams' Jen. I'm not sure how that is determined. If there's a possibility moving into that, are you doing that this year? I know there's quite an increase last year from what it was originally. She works more out of this office. I don't have anything to do out of what planning board stuff can do. I'm not sure what the, which are all of this for her. She does pad of the shop, so I'm not playing much.
She does. I think, you know, from looking at the expense, we're almost halfway through the year. She's not even halfway spent. So I think we're okay as far as her wages not changing. I guess is that what you're asking me? I'm not saying, you know, whether we give her a raise or not give her a raise, I'm just, in the budget wise, it looks like she's only spent, and this was just printed for me because I asked him to look, so I could do a transfer station budget. She's only spent almost three thousand so far. So I think we're okay. And even if we gave her, you know, a little bit of raise in the future, then I think we'd still be okay with the seventy-five hundred. That's what we were talking about for wages. So I wouldn't, you know...
Stay with that then.
And it looks like travel expenses went up a little bit, probably because of classes and things going on.
I'm looking to get some more hot stuff in for fourteen people because we're all new and we've got one person we haven't selected yet, plus hopefully two alternates. So it would be additional travel for training and for further training a little bit. These classes are coming to Saco and Augusta and sometimes Paul.
Oh, yeah. Paul is a nice one, but I mean, you have to go all the way to Augusta.
Exactly. It's all.
Excuse me, they just did Paul.
Supplies, no change. I have got a question about the phone though. Is there expectations on the part of the board that we are available at all times? Or can all phone calls just come in here and we don't need? or can all phone calls just come in here and we don't need self-service? Right now, Jen is carrying a cell phone, and she's taking calls on her personal phone, which.
She shouldn't be.
Yeah, that's where it gets touchy. And I'm just not sure.
I don't know, I feel, you know, the planning board, and I know you guys meet, you know, once a month or twice a month, or whatever's needed met, but I don't think it's really an emergency situation, so it really should come through here and be here on her phone here, I would think. You know, I know she comes, she's used it, she's used it in the past, but.
You already spoke to her, did she agree to this?
I haven't spoken to her, no, I have not, no.
Well, this is, this is something that we just need to.
Because I have my question.
How, how two channels is. Just to make sure that one that public is served promptly, and exactly that we don't get into this business that Mrs. Clinton got into, where we got business calls on a private line, and somebody requests the sale.
I believe she's paying for her cell phone.
She's not.
She's not?
No, it's not that.
So it's supposed to stop in July, August, this year.
Oh, is that right? Okay, I knew she had been at the beginning of the year.
Well, you can still check to see if it did stop.
My suggestion.
He was warned, said Daryl Morris.
We was going to continue with that, set up something to do with Sue for her.
White suit and all systems, well.
It's a very minimal usage, but it would just give somebody a number to call, and it would keep it separate, a person phone. So there's just, there's a bottom. Or I didn't, right now I didn't put anything in there, because I wanted to run that by the board first.
I just, I don't know how, you know, even like Sue's phone's hardly ever used, and I think, my concern is that if we did that, then, then it wouldn't just be, I mean, she would be a lot busier on that phone if we allowed it to happen, I think. You know, I wonder if, how often does she come in the office? You know, how often I have to go back and look.
I don't have any control around it.
Yeah. Have to see and really look.
Mike is probably left with it. Still here?
No.
Yeah, he's planning to come in later anyway.
Did you watch him?
Well, I know, I know a lot of times he contacts her, and I don't know how he does this, I don't know if it's.
I would rather afford to on her cellphone.
So, I know things pop up, but I just don't want.
So do you think that maybe we should put a little bit of money in there?
How much is their phone?
Sure, well, that's what I was going to say, I get a nine to eight card for $20.
Yeah, maybe we could.
And it gives me, it doubles.
So maybe, I want one.
Sixty minutes or something, but it doubles it because when a lot of phone, the phone, I think, originally costs 35 or something, it was so minimal. And I've, I've got a thousand minutes that I never use because.
Paid phone by the time.
You know, the only thing with those phones, you just have to make sure that you, after your ninety days is up, you got to make sure you recharge the amount, but I mean, it's cheap.
So do you think we should put something in there? Because, you know, I am concerned, I don't want her to use her cellphone, but if Mike's contacting her quite a bit, and Sue needs to contact her, then she really shouldn't be, we, you know, she shouldn't be using her old phone nine minutes and all that stuff for work purposes. I mean, you're right, we don't want to have.
She uses nine minutes? What happens?
Right. Yeah. So, I mean, if Sue's is $20 every ninety. Twenty, twenty every ninety days. Well, if we put a hundred in there, I mean, I mean, I think that would be a start, and.
I think you just tried to see if she.
Oh, I know she hasn't unpaid some.
Postage, stay the same, and less, my question to you, Tom, is. If we're going to work on that, where the funding is going to come from that, we're going to have to subsidize that out of the planning budget. Though that's going to be a separate issue, or something we talked about, but we never really came to agreement, or I shouldn't say agreement, but consideration. If we're sticking strictly with planning board, the postage, security is fine. Dues and subscriptions, I want a hundred dollars, because your company usually goes up a hundred dollars each year they renew on us.
Advertising.
Advertising, that will stay the same.
Well, Ashley, what do you have for advertising?
We have to post when we're going to have the public hearings.
Yeah, okay, but do you have 300?
I have 300.
Yeah. So last year approved was 500, that, did we not? Let me just look in mine.
I got 200 online.
You do?
I have five.
I have five, too.
Hmm, discrepancy.
I'll take that.
Well, last year's, what it says approved was five online, I don't know. And then requested this year is three, let me just see.
It's advertising? Yeah.
I believe we've spent very minimal on that this year.
To answer your question, was I going to tell you it's about July, she stopped getting paid for that.
And what we did rise in your absence, is we put in a hundred to make her a track phone in the future.
Okay.
And that way, it wouldn't just be for planning board, and she wouldn't have to. White Sue's track phone is $20 every ninety days, so that's what we put in there.
And Mike's left the office, probably knows not coming back, can I?
What do you have?
Wasn't what he told me.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, what are we thinking about doing?
Should be separate.
I, I would like to see it separate.
Yeah.
I'm just not sure, so many balls are up in the air right now. So many, so many expectations here, I just want to make sure I'm covered. That far off.
Yeah, geez, I don't think you've spent any of your postage yet. Did you get mailings?
Well, actually, this past year has been kind of quiet for the subdivisions.
So is this marijuana thing going on?
Uh, there's Mike that's not coming back. In case she wanted to, in case she wanted to ask him.
Your last message said you weren't coming back?
Yes, I probably wouldn't, I didn't know if I'd be back. Say I was going to be back, if I couldn't make it back.
It's okay.
Yeah, so what's up?
Apparently, I wrote it wrong.
Just curious how often you contact Sue.
Jen.
Jen, yeah, Sue. Jen, other than using the town office phone, you pull up and you call her, so.
Jen?
So I think we'd be okay by putting the hundred in for the track phone for her, so that way at least she gets something in case she didn't with customers. And you're right, it should be customer service, but if somebody has a question for her, if she wants.
Stop, huh?
Didn't get away with that one.
Thank you, Mike.
So at the bottom on the planning board budget, I get 11,984, but that extra hundred for the track phone. And her payroll is fine, and all that stuff looks fine.
Can't believe the postage as it is.
Yeah. Just in case they get a couple subdivisions, I'm going to have to mail a few things out.
There are, when they come in for a subdivision, they put in an application fee, which goes into the town conference. They also put down a escrow account for any legal services served that takes place. Looking back, we're having a hard time tracking where that money comes out of that escrow account, and it ends up usually coming out of our budget. Is there going to be a problem in the future, or is that where, when things like advertising should, if we're posting for a subdivision, that advertising money should come out of that escrow account, because that's what the purpose of it is, any expenses to do with that subdivision?
I think we briefly talked about that a few months ago at a meeting, about how we're going to track it better, and I think Jordan was involved with that with, you know, Jen going right to. Can we ask you a question while you're here? Tracking money.
For?
For, you know, through planning board, like when he has a subdivision and they have to pay it out of.
The escrow?
The escrow account.
They decided to give it right to the treasurer, and I think they write down and put it in the escrow.
Yeah, because that money has to come out of there, to pay certain things out of the escrow. That would come from Jen anyways, Aspen, wouldn't it?
Right.
So we could have Jen just go rate to Joy, while we have to pay for certain.
Yeah, I could just go, because where those are, there's so few of whom really, that I can just go right to the bank and have a cashier's check. You know, it's mostly the expenses themselves, like for advertising, we have to do the advertising, we have to do mailings or something in that line. Just want to make sure that the money comes out of the escrow and not out of my general budget, that's what I'm. Yeah, this is what we know, and then I can transfer it here, because they're all, like, I could take it, like, it would come out of the general fund, and then transfer it from escrow, I can just document the expenditure. Because then it makes a difference on how, how much money I use.
We talked briefly before about how money was coming up front in the post in the escrow accounts, we couldn't even track them really way back, we needed to find a way, and that's why she's going to go rate to, you know, and do it that way. I think it'll be cleaner and easier for us, so.
One is going to be the same, Tom?
I hope so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just so we can go over it now, because we'll go over it by a committee anyway, but Jen gets paid for her job, correct? And part of her job is to come in here and check telephones or whatever. Why would she have a phone anymore than say, I get calls on my cellphone for different things? I have to bring stuff in here. I'm not saying I want money because I don't, but why does she get a phone, and the rest of us are going to donate our time and our money and our phone things for conversations back and forth? If you're head of a board, you get that, all you get calls.
Right.
But you don't have a phone.
Let me clarify, Jen didn't ask for this, by the way, just.
I'm not saying that she asked for it, I'm saying we've gone, we've done this before, this is, we've gone through this before, and I personally don't think that she needs a phone any more than anybody else needs a phone. If she's supposed to come in, she should just come in and get her messages, or Sue call her, or whatever, like, she does the rest of us.
Yeah. Point taken.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to leave the budget at 11,984, we're good, yeah? Perfect.
I'll sign.
Yeah, I'll sign, thank you.
I have one other question.
Sure.
If there's more to it, descriptions, I would take place tonight.
Yes. It's further down the agenda, yes, yeah.
I'll stick around.
Yeah.
Okay, John, do you?
Well, I was next, but thought I had been, Ben has a couple things he wants to talk about.
You guys have four, a statement letters. Pretending to respond to these, so I find a question, I'll just pretend that every other's not working. Any questions in here? The letter's in here. I don't remember if there's any questions, we'll know.
Any approvals or denials?
Both.
Sounds like this is already done.
I just make your job easy.
Yes, you do, Ben.
You have a differing opinion, want to change whatever?
I believe I have, I agree with what I see.
You know where to sign all three, three different places. Found anything?
Sorry? There's always one.
Absolutely.
One of the papers. No, okay.
I'll settle that one.
Well, your, probably easiest way is going to be, are your requests first, or what do you want?
I was curious about how much it's paid.
Yeah.
I'll tell you here, too.
Yeah. The request is for that, these are the properties, that one, that one, or two of the eight that were valued, the waterfront properties that were valued at $400 per foot. That one you have is the largest amount. The rest should be both, because there's this little six out there coming. That's an old one that I use for an example, Paul. That's one that we signed a year ago.
Yeah.
Well, actually, throw it back, I guess, but, so this just was used as an example.
Okay.
Good job.
Oh, yeah. Practice.
Paul, on this one, you've got a couple of places to sign. You signed there, that means you've signed there, and from back there. Also seems to get your attention, if the budget committee is looking for an alternate, now that there was a resignation submitted and somebody stepped up, just letting you know, I'm willing to step in as an alternate.
Is there another resignation?
No, just one we have.
They still had an alternate, well, you're right.
Yeah, now one moved up to.
No.
No, she took her position.
I took Garrish's position.
She's taken her position to the end, we have that here to sign.
Then we will.
Yeah, while you're signing, you can sign that one.
They're public meetings, you can set that.
No, I don't, yeah.
So we didn't, we couldn't get any credit on this one?
I'll get that to us, you want to send us a planning paper now? I'll get that to Royce. Do I, you wanna sign this appointment paper now?
I might have to think about this.
This is something, you got three places. That was done.
I'm not even planning on signing that. Let me start using this. Yeah.
Sister Ben.
That one you need to, that one I need to sign too, if you are willing to sign it. That's the one I just gave you.
So did that one go back to twenty-five or down to twenty-five? Yeah, I did not do the front. I did the front, yeah. I did the rest of it. I didn't, that was fine, sorry. I was such a focus and reading. As soon as I. Royce, can you hand Paul that appointment paper? Can someone hand that to him?
That's mine. Will you hit that door? Yeah, just pull it through. Thank you, boy.
Thank you. Something along the same thing.
Just a guy in red one. There was an example, yeah, that's a previous lot. I sent out a similar situation. Just a landmark parcel. Biggest reason right now, one that requested it, we don't actually have them as a chain of ownership. There's still a couple missing, like, so.
Okay.
This person here died. We have that person acting as a personal representative of the previous person that had owned it and had passed away. So what we don't have is his two daughters now.
We don't, right. We don't have the link of it being passed.
From the person that she was overseeing to her estate or took into her custody. So I'm sure it's there, but we don't have it right now, so. You have ten days to respond, so you have to respond to it. And that was the one that, for whatever reason, got knocked down. Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Which it also has been corrected and needs to go back up to count the two acre quays lot.
Right.
Just like every property out there, it shouldn't have gone down to just a thousand per acre.
Right. Because it really doesn't matter. What is land market law?
Well, it does, but we have to go according to equity and how we're doing it down across our cross board.
Right.
If you'll let me jump in.
Sure.
I'm on your business. Maybe those right on your desk.
Did I sign it wrong?
You did. You did, yeah.
John's not getting it. No. Um, I don't think it's gonna get to four third. Okay, so you asked me to find out about this tax, property tax growth factor. And I talked to Vicky and she said it's how they determine the annual tax calculation for the following year, what it will be in the county. But it's not mandatory to do this.
Okay, so that's why we probably haven't done it for a long time.
Right. And she told me that, you know, if we did do it, she would help me. You know, she said to, I've gotta look up something and then she said I could give her a call. So, I mean, it's not mandatory. You don't have to do it. They would like it to be done. So I, you know, I can work on it next week or something with her.
I think that's a good idea.
Just so we can know how to do it. Other than creating more work, how does it help us?
Well, it's a good.
Well, it doesn't help. Well, I don't know if it doesn't help us particularly, but it's how, it helps the county determine.
The growth factors.
The, at, the annual tax calculation would be the following year. Don't they have that information already? No, that's why they're asking everybody. Well, how do they determine the amount of taxes they take from us? Because they use what they get from everybody else in York County.
Okay.
So that's how it gets determined. It's not something mandatory. We don't have to do it.
But it's good, I think it's good to do it. It could, I mean, it's good to get as many people as you can so they can get an accurate account for what they're trying to do.
Apparently, the other, the way they bend accounting part.
We used to do it a few years ago. Okay, we did it a few years ago. I mean.
So if you don't want to pursue it. It's not a mandatory request, then why are we spending our time doing it when we've got a lot of other things we claim we need to be doing?
Well, there is, but this helps York County to help them get their property tax factors correct, or as correct as they can. I mean, and they're asking us to do it. I don't think, I think we should do it. I mean, I think that's a good thing to do.
How much time do we spend doing this, roughly?
I don't know. I guess, I don't know.
Hour?
Well, we don't know, honestly, but, I mean, it's, it's York County trying and, and we've done it the past, a few years ago, but we just haven't done it for the last few years, so. What do you think, Paul? I mean, I think it's a good. I think it's a good thing to, to give us as many, um, as much information as we can, Sue.
Excuse me, Kristine?
Thank you.
I'd just like to go on the record as a resident saying that with, we don't have time to put minutes of these meetings on a website. We don't have time to answer the telephones, but we have time to do something that's not mandatory. I, I'm not understanding the reasoning behind this. I, I mean, I think it's a point of order and I think I'd like to make that point that if we don't have time to be doing the things that need to be done, how are we gonna just be doing nice things for the county?
Well, point taken, but I think the county deserves to have as much information as they can so they can give us the correct thing, so, point taken.
So, but it needs to be the board that makes that decision, not just what you think.
Well, I think that, I think it's a good idea to do it. I guess, you know, I'll make a motion that Sue works on that next week for, you know, for, she's, she has somebody to help her, but, maybe I should make the motion that, um, give you a day to work on it and if it doesn't, um, you know, if it becomes too complicated, then we just, I don't know, I just think it needs to be done. I guess maybe, I guess I, let me just reword this, but, um, I guess I make a motion that she works on the York County factor. Um, gets that off to them as, as, you know, next week.
Certainly.
Uh, Jana?
No. For previously stated reasons.
That's okay.
Quick question. When you were explaining everything and you, the selectmen were discussing this whatever together and you asked him what he thought and his answer was what? Okay, and you just did a vote.
No, he knows what we're talking about.
Yeah. Then why did he say what?
Because he wanted to sit in front of him. You guys also are gonna do an executive, so I don't know if you wanna do that now or after John. I don't think John's coming till four thirty. We can do that now. Sure. All right, we'll go into our executive session. For personnel matters.
No, not yet. Personnel issue? Personnel issue. Thank you.